All right, so we've got 9:00 AM. Today is August 27th of 2025. And would like to ask Brandon to come up if you wouldn't lead us in a word of prayer and the pledge of allegiance, please.
Yes, sir.
You may have to turn that mic on. I don't know if it's green or not. There you go.
All right, bow with me. Lord, we just come to you this morning. We pray for our community. We pray for the people of Elbert County. We pray that there would be hope in their hearts, peace in their minds. We pray for our local leaders, that they would have wisdom, they would have foresight to the future for our residents, that they would make wise decisions, that they would be strong, clear-minded leaders with the best hopes and best intentions of the residents of our county on their hearts. Lord, we pray this to you this morning in your son's name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Brandon. All right, we'll call this meeting to order. And Rhonda, would you please do a roll call?
Commissioner Buck.
Here.
Commissioner Schroeder.
Here.
Commissioner McDaniel.
Here.
First item up here is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Favor sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do we want a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? Would you gentlemen prefer to go line by line?
I think we can do the entire consent agenda.
Okay, sir.
Therefore, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is elected officials, department heads and staff reports. But before we kick that off, would like to introduce our new Office of Emergency Management Director, Jacob Love. If you stand up, sir. And he has a started out here in Elbert County with Elizabeth Fire and Flight Medic. There are a lot of things I want to get into your long. He's got a long resume of a lot of classes and things, but welcome to Elbert County. Twenty-eight thousand great people and a few old sore heads, but you know, we'll get past that. So, did you want to make a photograph real quick for that? You want to do that with just Jacob or the board, everybody? Okay. Let's do that real quick. Y'all give us just a second. I'm not going to put you on the spot, but there'll be a point and section in the meetings here as you see that you'll need to give a report. All right, so moving on. Any elected officials here that would like to give a report this morning? Good morning. I didn't even see you hiding back over there.
I came in. I sneak in. Sherri Hewlett, County Treasurer and Public Trustee. Business as usual in our department. I'd like to, I don't do it often enough, I'd like to give a shout out to Michelle Ingersoll and Beth Barnes for all the hard work they do in the office and putting up with me. So I just want to thank them. I'm here on a couple other items, and I'm not sure what the best. I don't know if this is the right platform or not, but we haven't met collectively as elected officials in a while. And so I have some issues and some concerns. I know that we have talked about different policy changes and things like that, which that, you know, there are things that need to be changed and things that need to be done, good or bad. But I'm here to ask that if we're going to have policies and procedures, that everybody follows those. For instance, the term limit extensions. I am more than appreciative of the voters of this county for giving me an opportunity to run again if I choose to. I think it's not just a good thing for the current electeds that are here now, that do a wonderful job, but I think it's good for Elbert County's future. So I can't thank them enough. In full disclosure, the citizen that brought this initiative to the board last year works in my office. I did not promote it. I did not encourage it. I just steered her in the direction, well, both of them actually, the direction that they needed to go. And if you know Michelle, she follows the letter of the law to the T, and she did that. And she spent months and months on this, on that initiative. I don't have a, I wanted to be very clear that I do not have a problem with the sheriff being on for a third term, or the coroner, or even the county commissioners. I feel like, let the citizens vote. But I feel like if one citizen has to follow this procedure, everybody should. So that's my first, that was my first issue I wanted to bring out. The other thing is, you know, we're right in the middle of the budget season. We're all working on our budgets, having our meetings, and I'm a little concerned about our spending. I'm the money mover, so I see what's going out. I see what's coming in. I just want to make sure that as we go through this process, you know, current and into the future, some of the recurring costs that we may have now are going to carry on to 2026. So as the county, elected county treasurer, I just want to make it known that I see this stuff and I'm concerned. I would not be doing my job if I didn't bring this forward. I just want to make sure that we're all, every department head, every elected official that presents a budget is keeping in mind that this money is not ours. This doesn't belong to me. It doesn't belong to you. It doesn't belong to Sean. It's our citizens' money, and we need to make sure that we're spending it wisely. I know emergencies happen and things come up. We spoke about that at the last meeting. And I'm doing everything within my power to make sure we're getting, again, like I said last meeting, the best bang for our buck, that we're earning as much interest as we can and that it's secure and liquid. So I think we all need to be paying attention to some of these things. I have some concerns. I'm not going to bring them out in public. But if we're talking about pauses and moratoriums, property tax, you know, is a big part of our revenues. I get that, but that's not the only thing. And I really agree with the citizen that spoke last meeting. Let's continue to do our jobs and figure this out. I believe that, you know, we need controlled growth. I believe that that's a good thing, but we also need revenue. We can't provide the services that we provide without it. So I'm happy to talk to, if we can schedule a meeting, I can bring forward the issues that are bothering me, the things that I'm seeing. But since we're not collectively meeting anymore, it's kind of hard, and I'm not sure what your schedules are. I'm not here every day, but when I do come over here, the doors are closed. So I just want you to know that I work Monday through Thursday from seven to five, and my door is wide open. So if you have any questions, any citizen has any questions or concern, unless I'm at a conference, or at lunch, or at the bank or post office, my door is always open, and I'm happy to talk with anybody about where our money is invested, what's, you know, to the best of my ability. So I just felt like as an elected treasurer of this county, that I needed to let you all know that I have some concerns. And I don't want to go back to 2008, nine, 10, when we were broke. We worked really hard to save some money, and I think that we need to continue down that path. And yes, we have money, and if we need to spend it, so be it. I'm not saying we don't spend money, but we need to be careful about how we spend it. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Noted. And those meetings were not permanently canceled. They have been postponed a little bit because of other meetings involving, well, I can't even get into that. I better just stop there. So there's some legal issues, and we, it conflicted with that. So we will reschedule those meetings, get them back over. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other elected officials here who would like to make comments? Good morning.
Good morning. Susan Murphy, Assessor. Second that, Sherri. Great job. I think transparency in our finances and transparency in our conversations and concerns is very important and should be a priority. I wanted to report to you that I had recently finished the abstract and certification of all of the values in the county as of August 25th. So it was a bit challenging with the new legislation with actual value and then actual school value with different assessment rates, but we made it through that, and I'm very confident in our reporting. And so everything's been provided to you, to Sean, and to finance, so we can start building our budget for '26 based on the valuation and taxes that Sherri will collect. So that's really all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other elected? Seeing none, we will ask for department heads. Any department heads here?
Good morning, Commissioners. Tiffany Hermes, Finance Director. Just wanted to give you a brief update on our 2024 audit. You all were presented with our extension that we filed with the state back in June. It was approved, so that extends our timeframe until the end of September, September 30th, to have that submitted. We do officially have the draft financials from Ruben Brown, and we will start working on putting together the MDNA and finalizing those documents for presentation at the September 10th BOCC meeting.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for me regarding that?
Yeah, and I don't know if you can comment to this or not, but there was a delay. Can we discuss why there was a delay?
There are some multiple factors. One of that being that this year, the county moved from one software to another, and so we had to transition all of our previous data into a new system, and that transition did go well. Actually, Ruben Brown was not able to find any errors with that, but with that was a learning curve with running some of our trial balances correctly. I know that put us back about a week. And then beyond that, it was within the auditors, and I think that they had a little bit of staffing issues that put back on the schedule.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, you got any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other department heads?
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jennifer Jones, Community and Development Services. Just a quick update on the comprehensive plan. Our survey is still open. It'll be open through September 5th, so we want to again encourage everyone to take that and provide their feedback. We are currently at about 680 or so responses, so we're getting up there. We're excited about that. And we are tracking where the responses are coming from, and at the moment, they are tracking very closely to our population distribution. So that's exciting, and we've been monitoring that, and we'll continue to do so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other department heads? Yes, sir. I was hoping you were going to get up.
Good morning, Commissioners. Monty Hinkins, Elbert County Public Works Director. Want to provide you an update on the 166 repay project. The project's going pretty well. Traffic flow has been somewhat of an issue due to multiple kind of projects within the project going on at the same time. We've got the milling going on of the old asphalt, and then in conjunction, paving back of the new asphalt, and also two large culvert projects going on at the Deer Creek intersection in 166, and then 1721 and 166. All the traffic flow is to a minimum of 20 minutes or so, but the intersection of 1721 and 166 is problematic in the morning. So we had closed that intersection initially, and then we thought we were far enough along with that culvert replacement that we could open it back up, but I'm getting reports this morning that there is too much of a delay there. So we're going to go ahead, effective tomorrow, start closing that intersection again until that culvert project is complete. And there'll be a detour, and we will get with our PIO people and get that posted out. But effective tomorrow, that intersection will be closed.
Yeah, and I'll just comment to that. I've seen that myself the last few days, and it's been pretty bad. So I think it's the safest thing to do.
Okay.
For all concern.
Do you guys have any other questions concerning that project?
Looks like they're doing a good job out there. They just need.
Scheduled to be complete by the end of September, first October, and I think it'll turn out just as nice as the other side of 166. Have a little wider shoulder there in asphalt and be safer.
So what about the neighborhoods there? Do we need to get messages out to them so they can put it out and maybe post it on their websites for the people in those HOAs?
Yeah, I mean, the biggest impact will be Spring Valley. So if someone could provide me with that info, yeah, we could, we could sure communicate with them directly.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads? All right, staff reports. All right, seeing none, we will move on to the public comments section of this portion of the meeting, and I am supposed to read this to you, so bear with me. This portion of the agenda is reserved for citizens who wish to comment to the BOCC on items of county interest that are not scheduled for discussion or action. This time will not be used to make political speeches nor personal attacks be tolerated. Individuals will be limited to one opportunity to speak for a period of up to five minutes during this portion of the agenda. So with that, we'll open up the public comments section of this meeting. Do you have any public comments? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carrie Jimbels, 19656 Weidemeyer Road, Elbert County Environmental Alliance. I just wanted to give you a quick update. The first eminent domain lawsuits will be going in front of district court on September 10th. This is XL filing for eminent domain. Even though you have denied their permits, they are still continuing. We would like to thank you for denying and for continuing to hold strong in light of their lawsuit against the county. On August 20th, I'm not sure if you're aware, XL also filed suit against El Paso County for the same reasons. So we're in, they're in the same boat as we are. Hopefully, there's strength in numbers. And we've also been reading several news reports about some proposed legislation that will fast-track some of these green energy projects and would allow the legislature to overturn local government decisions. And Commissioner Schroeder, we know that you are a member of CCI, and we were hoping that perhaps you could talk with CCI about that and maybe get some more information and hopefully stand strong as counties against this legislation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Hello, sir?
Thank you. I'm Bill House, 7131 South Shenandoah. And there's been some discussion about a moratorium. And I think the proposed moratorium's been framed as a simple pause. In reality, I believe it's anything but simple. It's a sweeping ban that tells current and future residents, landowners, and employers, Elbert County's closed for business if we do this. I would encourage you not to do this. I've appreciated a lot of the decisions you've made. I think it's been, it's been a pretty good year so far. And let me go a little bit further. Glenn Neer, a longtime Elbert County resident and renowned construction expert, captured the concern during his testimony at the public hearing. This meeting was held in an underhanded manner, where community members and business owners were not given the time to react and share their voices. That's not the kind of transparency we need. The moratorium is bad for the economy, bad for business, and stunts Elbert County growth. As you probably know, the largest workforce, the largest group in the county workforce-wise is now construction trades. This affects them. This affects them tremendously. And let's say families who planned on to sell a parcel to fund retirement or help their children start out would suddenly find that that option is gone. Ranchers who have responsibly managed their land for generations would be told that they can't adapt or diversify as they see fit. For example, every new structure contributes property taxes. Every new residence supports local businesses, and every building permit helps pay for public safety. These permits is what funds Elbert County's schools, infrastructure, fire protection, law enforcement, and so much more. Freezing new construction dries up those critical revenue streams. The cost of keeping those services afloat would shift the entire financial burden onto existing residents. It would also directly threaten local jobs. Consider that the contractors and tradesmen are currently, again, the largest segment of workforce in the county, well above 25%. Builders, electricians, plumbers, roofers, and countless other tradespeople live and work here. They depend on steady projects to put food on the table. Shutting down permitting even temporarily throws their livelihoods into question at a time when skilled labor force is already stretched thin nationwide. For small businesses, the impact would be just as harsh. Fewer new families moving in means fewer customers for restaurants, shops, and service providers. Entrepreneurs and job creators would see few reasons to start or continue serving Elbert County. Meanwhile, piecemeal development, small projects approved by one by one, fall far short of filling the gap in historically taxed our smaller aquifers. That's the kind of growth that truly strains roads, schools, and water systems because it isn't funded properly or planned holistically. Ironically, it's a moratorium. A moratorium would create the very sprawl that supporters fear. Let me move on. Okay. It's the wrong message at the wrong time. Studies conducted and paid for by Elbert County taxpayers show we need roughly 3,000 new homes in the next decade, which we probably have, to meet local demand. The population is currently expanding at around 2% per year, and many of the community members' children and grandchildren hope to buy homes here someday. If we slam the door on any new permitting, especially in approved communities, what happens to the young families, first-time buyers, and seniors looking to downsize? They don't stop needing homes. They just won't find them in Elbert County. So the demand will spill into neighboring counties. Prices will climb, making it harder for teachers, civil servants, and small business owners to live where they work, not to mention the inevitable lawsuits that this type of restriction opens the county up to. Rights for some, but not for others. That is exactly why courtrooms were created, to ensure that everyone has equal rights under the law. So we need planning, not politics. What makes this moratorium especially frustrating is that Elbert County already has the tools to responsibly manage growth. Its comprehensive plan calls for phased, thoughtful development that respects our rural way of life while preparing for the future. Every project is already subject to rigorous public hearings and oversight. Instead of a sweeping ban to protect the county, we need to enforce the standards we already have. The better path is to hold developers accountable, insist on high standards, and make sure growth pays its own way. Some feel that this was rushed and last minute. The way it was introduced was wrong. It skips right over the public process, and we rely on that process to make big decisions. This could sidestep the voices of the very people.
That's five minutes?
That it affects most.
You can go ahead and finish up real quick.
Yeah, so a call for transparency and common sense. The people of Elbert County are not anti-growth. We're pro-responsibility, pro-property rights, and pro-community. We want schools that are well-funded, emergency services that are well-equipped, and small businesses that can thrive. We also want our kids and grandkids to have a shot at building a life here, not be forced to move away. None of that is possible if the county slams the brakes on the permit process. It's a message that undermines confidence, kills momentum, and creates more problems than it solves.
Thank you.
So we should, we ask that you reject that, that whole concept of this, and our community should be aware of our position because of it.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Any other public comments today? All right. Yes, ma'am.
I'll take you back on him. Danielle Nieschwenger. I own three businesses in Elbert County, 24266 Main Street. First, I'd like to say that I am blessed to live and own businesses in Elbert County. We have a phenomenal sheriff. We have amazing schools, and we are a conservative county that believes in less government, more Constitution. That being said, this moratorium would allow for corruption to occur. When I supported each one of you for commissioner, I did not do so because of false campaign promises. I supported you because you each ran on transparency and holding yourselves to a higher standard, holding our county to a higher standard, and holding other elected officials to a higher standard. I believe that the correct answer is not pro-growth, it is not anti-growth. I believe that the correct answer is responsible growth driven by men of integrity, men of faith, and men who believe in the strong values that this county holds. I am blessed to get to raise my kids here. I own a construction business, and I would like to see Elbert County continue to thrive in a way that promotes family values and faith. That can happen, but not under the current moratorium that's being proposed. If we take away the rights of our citizens by allowing things like corrupt avenues with permitting to occur, we are no different than Governor Polis or the president when they said that they could mandate whether your job was essential during COVID. And this was a county that stood up for business rights. This was a county that stood up for individual rights and for our schools and our children. To see that this type of interest is being proposed, especially backed by a political candidate who is using this as a John Dutton Hollywood movie scene to promote a governor race, is not what this county is for. We are not some county that's going to be stepped on or walked all over. I believe that the men and women of this room are here today because they believe that Elbert County is the best county in our state, and I would like to see it stay that way. So I highly encourage you to think about the promises you made to the people of this county when you ran for office and to uphold those and to follow less government, more Constitution, and promote responsible growth. Let's not fall to the wayside of radical ideals of far left or far right. Let's do what's right for the people of the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Going once. All right, seeing none, we will move on to the next section. And before we get into discussion items, I'd ask for your indulgence as chairman. I want to take chairman's privilege here, and I got a few things I need to read out, if you don't mind. And I'll start off with, many in this room have no doubt heard the quote, "Politics is a contact sport." And I'll tell you that since becoming into this position, it is, nothing said has been closer to the truth. It very clearly describes the aggressive and very personal nature of politics, and just like contact sports, it can leave a trail of damage and destruction, which is what we're starting to see. Let me be very clear, I'm not going to run from it, not ever run from it. In fact, the nasty faults, unnecessary verbal insults from a handful of keyboard warriors in Elbert County make me want to fight even harder for the people of this county. The integrity of this board and the county government, and I want to say that even though the three of us disagree on things up here, nobody here is trying to do anything underhanded on this board and trying to keep anything from the public. We're doing what we have to do bound by the law. The, I'm sure you've noticed lately, there's been a lot of so aggressive and so much personal insults and... insults and things like that coming over on social media. It is absolutely horrific. I wondered to myself and publicly today who could possibly benefit from the creation of such manufactured outrage, emotional hijacking, misinformation, disinformation, and malinformation other than those who have been creating it. I think we all know who doesn't benefit, and the majority of those of us, we serve. We serve 28,000 people in this county, not 10 people in this county. Manufactured outrage is calculated in faults. It creates confusion, chaos, and division amongst us. It is intended to provoke emotion and distract from the most important issues that we are facing in Albert County. Those insults and those issues, the majority of our community care very much, and frankly, those issues of importance to this board. The unacceptable intent to harm by less than a handful of individuals can erode the most reasonable person's ability to distinguish fact from fiction and make it difficult for those we serve to trust what is reliable information from stable and reliable resources. I am here to ask that that stops, and it stops today, and to help set the record straight. We are launching a new section of the county's website called Fact or Fiction. On the page, we ask, how would you know if what you hear or read is fact or opinion, real rumor, and where would you go to know the truth? We ask that you start with us. If you hear something, read something that just doesn't seem right, reach out to us, us being the three commissioners here at this table. That's why we created this page, to give you a trusted source for the truth about your county government and the public servants who work for you. If you have a question you want answered, go to the webpage. Scroll down to submit your question via the online form. We will review your question and post it with an answer there. Sometimes those questions may take a little bit longer to answer. And you can look up, sorry, I forgot to point that out. Thank you for posting that up there. This is the, what you're going to see on the, on our website, Fact or Fiction. It's actually launched this morning. In the interest of truth and civility, please know that we reserve the right to rephrase inflammatory questions before posting. Questions that include profane, discriminatory, abusive, or potentially malicious language or personal attacks will not be posted. In closing, I prefer to leave you with a statement attributed to Plato, one of the most influential philosophers in Western history. Politics is a bridge between a city of human beings and the city of God, in which we discuss the relationships between the ideal state and the morale and ethical responsibility of individuals. We encourage healthy debate that can lead to better and more collaborative problem-solving benefiting all. Staying in the truth as part of public debate is of paramount importance. It is our morale and ethical responsibility to do so. Local government requires that we do our best to adopt solutions to the priority issues facing our communities. Anything that interferes with effective, respectful civil communications on the journey to these solutions threatens the vital work we were elected to achieve. We are committed to representing one another and those we serve as an example of how to govern best and to emphasize the basic of effective local governing, such as leading effective civil public meetings in the public interest, communicating with transparency and truth under all circumstances, cultivating and sustaining trusted relationships. And to speak for this board, we are committed to doing what is required to effectively serve you with a focus on civility, respect, and professionalism. And we ask the same from those we serve. Now, as I stated earlier, we've got 28,000 people approximately in this county, and there's what I call the dirty dozen who like to hide behind keyboards and really spread false information and get people pumped up about things that are just absolutely ridiculous. We're here, we work for you, the general, the public. And if you have a question about what's going on in this county, reach out to us here. I'm not going to get into great details, but to get on there and say that we three commissioners are withholding information or, we're not withholding anything. We have no reason to withhold anything. We are bound by law, and we have to follow the law. And we're going to follow the law to the best of our abilities. And if we make a misstep, we'll own it. We'll step up and we'll say so. Anyway, with that, I could go on, and I know our county attorney's probably over there looking at me. I can feel the heat coming from over there. But I'm going to shut up now. But listen, we're not here to try to do anything behind the scenes, underhanded, anything of that nature. We have a lot of information, but quite frankly, and what brought this up is not only the information that came across the internet, but some of the phone calls that were received up here to our county employees. If the general public, and I don't see any of the people, I don't see any of the keyboard warriors here today. They like to put stuff out and hide behind their computers. But the, call us. We're the ones to take the heat, not our employees here. Don't be disrespectful to these people that work in this county. They love this county just as much as you do and just as much as we do. And I'm going to leave it with that, and sorry I ran it a little bit there, Sean and Lance. But anyway. So, with that being said, commissioners, you got any comments you want to make on that, sir? All right, thank you. All right. Next item here is discussion items. The first item up here is discuss the status of the 2025 USGS updated report. And that's actually what some of this controversy in the past few weeks has been about. We have, there are reports that are online from previous studies. This report, we received a draft. We were specifically told and stated that it was not for public release. It has not been finalized through the USGS. We are frustrated about it as the general public is. We have notified them, requested, requested. We even just filed a, with the, Lance, what is the terminology, the acronym and the name of it? We've requested a request for open records, basically with the feds.
The acronym is FOIA, F-O-I-A, and it's under the Freedom of Information Act. The USGS is a federal agency, so it's not bound by Cora. It's bound instead by FOIA.
Right. So, with that being said, if you were to sit down, not knowing any different, and read some of this garbage that's on some of these posts on the social media, you would think that we've got this report and we don't want to release it. Let me assure you, when we get the finalized approved report that the federal government gives us, that final report will be made public. I give you my word on that. That's going to happen. We all agree upon that. There's no disagreement about it at all. We're going to do that. So, with that being said, I don't know if I've addressed that. Commissioner Schroder, you got anything you want to add to that, sir? Commissioner Buck?
I'll make a quick comment. Some of the things that I've heard out there on social media was, you know, it's been 10 years and we haven't got any data yet, and we're throwing millions of dollars away. That is just factually not true. As Commissioner McDaniel mentioned, there is a report that was published. It's on our website. It was from the time period 2015 to 2018. That was the first measurement period, published in 2019. That's on the website. It's been there for a number of years. So, to say that it's been 10 years and we have nothing, that's not true. The contract we signed, which I have a copy of right here upon taking office, if anybody wants to see that, the contract stated that the next measurement period was going to be from 2015 to 2023, with the draft copy being delivered to us in 2025, early 2025, which they did. So, they are adhering to the contract that we signed. Now, the only thing is, it's a draft copy. We were expecting a final copy, and now they're saying it'll be in the fall when they've done their due diligence and finalized that. So, we are in communication with them. We do have a copy of the contract. And I just wanted to let people know it hasn't been 10 years. That's factually inaccurate, that we haven't got any data, and that we are, you know, at odds with releasing this information. I think we all agree that as soon as we get the data approved by our attorney, who we've asked to expedite the process, if at all possible, so that we can release it. I want to see the final draft just as much as anybody. So, with that, I'll leave it at that.
I notice also, now, I'd like to recognize that Lance, but I would say Jennifer is probably sick and tired of hearing us ask every day, where are we at? What's the status? Do you have anything? We've been after this report long before this stuff ever hit social media. So, we're not asleep at the wheel here. We're working on it, trying to get it to the public as quickly as possible. Sir?
If you'll give me a second, I think I should answer a question that I know is going to be asked, given this discussion. So, the reason the county got a draft, and it was marked draft, and the federal government asked us not to distribute it, is it was distributed to the county under the deliberative process exception to FOIA. Essentially what that was, it was a draft given to the county, asking if the county had any comments on that draft while they worked to finalize it. And because it's considered in process and work product under FOIA, they have asked us not to distribute it. So, if the same was true under Cora, that draft would not be disclosable under Cora. But this is not a county document. And there's a conflict between FOIA and Cora on this point. So, I know one citizen has asked for that draft document, which, because of the way USGS has postured it, we don't believe we can give it out. But what we can do is we can file a lawsuit in the district court here and ask the district court to resolve the conflict between the two laws and determine if the district court wants to disclose the draft. So, that has been offered to the gentleman that made the open records request. I want that to be clear. There is a path to resolve this issue, other than just arguing about it. There's a clear path. So, that's why it hasn't been distributed. That's why we continue to not believe we are supposed to distribute it. But there is a path to resolve that if anyone wants to pursue it.
Thank you for that explanation. Thank you very much. All right. Do we need to have any further discussion on this, gentlemen? You're good. Commissioner Schroder? Mr. Buck, you're good. All right. Next item here is consideration of a letter supporting bipartisan action regarding the unfunded state mandates. Commissioner Schroder?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As mentioned earlier, I'm representative to CCI, the Colorado Counties Incorporated, which is the lobbying arm for the counties. And a letter came across concerning unfunded mandates. There's 13 counties up to this point that have assigned on to this letter to go to the governor, pushing back on unfunded mandates that come to the counties. And in the time that I've been both here at the clerk and as commissioner, they just continue to push more and more unfunded mandates down to the counties, which ties our budget up. It takes local decision-making out of our hands, and there's time for a little bit of pushback. And so, I'm bringing this before the board for us to sign on with the other 13 counties to go ahead and push back against some of these unfunded mandates. And the letter that we have in our packet initiated from Mesa County, so I would ask that we change it to have our information there, but that we do also sign on to this letter, saying that we are opposed to these unfunded mandates. And I think the key part of this letter is on the second page, about the third paragraph from the bottom, says, finally, we are instructing our respective staff to begin treating these unfunded mandates listed above, and there's four listed in the letter, as optional pursuant to CRS 291304.5, Para 1. It is our sincere hope that this does not lead to unnecessary litigation. However, our county attorneys are prepared to defend our exercise of statutory remedies if necessary. And it is, it's vital that we maintain control locally to be able to make decisions for our budget, not a top-down approach, but for what's best for each county to be able to make those decisions. I'm not saying that some of the things aren't good, but that doesn't necessarily mean that every county has the financial wherewithal to implement these things, and it puts pressure on other areas of the budget. And so, with that, I would submit that this commission signs on to this letter.
Commissioner Buck?
I would just like to add that I'm in full support, and I don't see why we wouldn't support that.
Any other discussion? Any public discussion? Anybody got any comments or questions about this?
Would we want, let me interject, would we want to make that an action item, Dallas, and just move it from discussion?
I think it would be prudent for us to move it to action, considering that session, the extra session that's going on and the budget shortfall that the state's experiencing. I would not be surprised if they try and throw some of that shortfall onto the county's backs. And I think the quicker that we ratify this and sign on, the better.
Okay. You want to make a motion to move it to an action item, sir?
Yes, I move that we move the item G to the consideration of a letter supporting bipartisan action regarding unfunded state mandates to an action item H4.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. All right, thank you. Consideration of resolution seeking formal designation of State Highway 86 is a scenic and historic byway. That is something that this board in the past, or this, or previous boards in the past have tried to get looked at and tried to get pushed through the state, and without any success. This is something that we feel like that we need to do, and it would not only be just Albert County, it would also be Douglas County. So, it would basically be from Highway 83 in Douglas County all the way to I-70. So, that's something that we would like, we're going to work on together to get that done. And I think it would bring the potential for grants and federal grants in here for businesses and help our county there and help locals as well. So, any discussions on that, gentlemen?
No, I'm in support. I think it's a great idea. As you mentioned, we have looked at this in the past, and evidently, we're told some erroneous information that this program had been ceased. But I'm glad that it hasn't, and fully supportive of petitioning the governor on this.
Commissioner Buck, any comments, sir?
No, I'm actually in support of it as well.
So, should we move this then to action items? And if so, is there a motion?
I think it's appropriate. I don't think that there's any controversy with this. The fact that it'd be a benefit to our county. So, therefore, I move that we move discussion item G3, the consideration of resolution seeking formal designation of State Highway 86, as a scenic and historic byway to action item H5.
Second. Motion, there is a second. All in favor, a sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda is action items. The first item up here is consideration of a resolution for a former to fill the planning commission's vacancy. So, we have a vacancy on the planning commission. We have an applicant, and there was some discussion at our last meeting about members of the planning commission being able to serve on the appointed steering committee for the comprehensive plan. I'd ask that we table that, that we could see and let our legal counsel look to see if there was any type of a conflict with that before we took a vote. And he has reported back that there is no conflict with serving on both. So, with that, is there a motion to accept the candidate? So with that, is there a motion to accept the candidate Ken Mattson for the appointment to the planning commission?
Yes, Commissioner, I'll make a motion to appoint Ken Mattson to the planning commission.
Okay, there is a motion. Is there any further discussion on this?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll just reiterate what I said last time and elaborate a little bit on that. As you mentioned, last meeting, we appointed Ken Mattson to the Comprehensive Steering Plan Committee, 16-member board that will be intricate in developing our comprehensive plan. Also included in that 16, we have currently two planning commission members on that board. And if Mr. Mattson is approved today, that'll be three members of a nine-member board from the planning commission that will be on the steering committee comp plan. I have trouble with that in a couple areas. One, I don't think it's fair to the other six members that are on the planning commission, that three of their members will have a greater influence, putting together a document that is ultimately the planning commission's document. To have three people, even one, but now have three people have extraordinary influence and input into that document is not fair to the rest of the planning commission. The idea of having a steering committee with a variety of backgrounds, lengths of time in the county, different home style choices, was to get a good cross-section of the county. And we are limiting that when we continue to put one, two, three people in multiple rows, roles. They don't have, they were not getting a good cross-section as what the, the, Kimmy Horn asked us to put together. So while it may not be against the law, it certainly is bad optics. It certainly has the look of trying to stack the deck and not have a, have a good cross-section. And I am concerned, as I mentioned last week, or last meeting, that this would put four planning commissions in District 2, which is my district. Mr. Buck made a comment, why would I complain about having four in my district? That's not the point. The point is that there's only two in District 3. And so have representation from District 3, in my personal opinion, is important, even though it's not my district. I think we need to have a great cross-section across the board, again, to have a variety of opinion. And to think that there's not one of the 8,000 people that live in District 3 that would be willing to serve on the planning commission, and so we have to go outside of our district to find a planning commission, makes me scratch my head. So for those reasons, I will be not supporting this. It is, the appearances are bad, it's stacking the deck, and I'm against it.
All right. Mr. Buck, any comments, sir?
No comment at this time.
Just to throw it out there, we've, I've looked into other jurisdictions where they have rewritten their comprehensive plan, and basically, and they've taken, some have taken a path that they just let the planning committee do it, instead of having a steering committee or an advisory board to the planning board for the comprehensive plan. So I mean, that is an option. If we wanted to do that, we could just push it to the planning commission and let them do it. Lance, you have something, sir?
A couple things, and I'm sorry to interrupt. You do have a motion, you do not yet have a second, so procedurally you'll need a second.
Got it.
And I don't believe you've opened this issue for public comment yet.
Okay. So we got a motion, is there a second? Okay, I'll make a second on it. All right. Any public comments at this point? Anybody want to make a public comment regarding this particular issue? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Kristi Powell, 7131 South Channeller Road. I believe that these committees that are ultimately giving you community viewpoints, when we have people serving on multiple committees, ultimately for the same purpose, we're not getting an overall community view. We're narrowing that optic of what that particular person, their view is. We need to really open up what we're looking at and reach out to our neighbors. We have a lot of people in this district in this little circle, and we need to really focus and expand that view, and look at what other people might be willing to do to serve our county and our neighbors. So I would recommend, as a community member, that you seek out alternative persons for this, for this seat on the planning commission. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, Diana Edstrom, 10243 Private Road, Albert. I just wanted to say that traditionally, and I don't believe it's in writing, but this board has always had representation of three planning commissioners in each district. I mean, that's, that's just the way it's worked. I think as Dallas said, it gives each commissioner an equal representation, because you never know who the next commissioners are gonna be coming in. And I think if you, if you wanted to change this, you should change the regulations or write a regulation saying, you know, there will be three from each district. I would ask, did, was there any type of online asking for a new planning commissioner? Was anything put out there to encourage people and let them know that there were openings? And, you know, what a planning commissioner does to encourage people in, you know, Byron, your district? And you've got a big area, there's gotta be somebody out there. And there was something else, and, oh, I know what it was. So if part of the concern that Dallas has brought up is that Mr. Mattson is also on the steering committee, then ask him to step down. I don't know which one of you put him on there, because we don't know which steering committee members were appointed by who or why they were appointed, but if that's part of the issue, then put somebody in Mr. Mattson's place on the steering committee, or put the steering committee back to the 15 members, which was my understanding what you all originally agreed to. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, there's a motion, there's a second. This time we'll take a vote. All in favor, a sign of aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next item that we have on the agenda, let me get back to it here. Public hearing, special event liquor permit for the Albert County Sheriff's Office Foundation. So we need to open this public hearing. Is there a motion to open a public hearing? We need to make a motion to do that. So let's make a motion here to, or get a motion to open a public hearing for the liquor permit for the Albert County Sheriff's Office Foundation.
Yes, Commissioner, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the special event liquor permit for the Albert County Sheriff's Foundation.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Jennifer, do you want to?
I'll speak on this. Good morning, Commissioners. Kayla Mannering, liquor licensing clerk. We received an application for the special event permit from the Albert County Sheriff's Foundation for their Back the Badge event, which will be held on September 27th from 4:00 PM to midnight at the Messer Event and Agricultural Center. This is an annual event, no changes have been noted, and staff recommends approval of the special event permit, and the sheriff's office is also here if you guys have any questions.
All right, thank you. You got any, any comments, sir? Just put you on the spot, I know, but welcome back.
Dave Fisher, under Sheriff. This event is in its fifth or sixth year, I believe, and it's, if it's not the largest, it's one of the largest events in the entire county. We're planning on about 850 people this year. So it's a, it's a very big public event, and it helps support our deputies with the foundation that takes care of them in extreme situations and hardships and things like that. So we haven't had any major problems that I'm aware of, didn't have any accidents, any DUI arrests, anything like that, but it's a very positive event for the sheriff's office in the county.
It also is a fundraiser for the K-9 unit, and food, medical expenses, vet bills, that kind of thing too, right?
Yep.
Yeah. It's very good. I've been attending all of them each year, and it's a very good event. So if you haven't attended that, and I don't know if any tickets are still available or not, but I would, sold out.
We were sold out in about a week to 10 days. So it goes very fast.
Yeah, it's, it's a very good event, so, all right, thank you.
Hey, Dave, how many people did you say were gonna be attending?
About 850 attending.
Eight fifty?
Probably another 50 to 75 support people.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
All right. Any, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
Yeah, Commissioner, I'll make a motion that we approve this special event liquor permit for the Albert County Sheriff's Foundation.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Motion to close the public hearing on the Albert County Sheriff's Foundation.
Commissioner, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing on the Albert County Sheriff's Foundation.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is the consideration of authorization for the 2025 Albert County Annual Fire Operating Plan. You got it in your packet here. Any discussion on that, gentlemen?
Well, just to, just to bring it up, we did read it, we had our attorney review it, I believe the county manager reviewed it, I think the fire departments have reviewed it, the sheriff's departments reviewed it. I think, as far as I know, Lance, you have any comment on it?
Yeah, my understanding, this is a plan put together by the fire chiefs and in cooperation with the sheriff's office. I read the plan, I do not have any concerns.
Okay, thank you. All right. And this is an action item there, we have an opportunity for public comments. Are there any public comments? Okay, seeing none, then I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the 2025 Albert County Annual Fire Operating Plan as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Next item was added here, and that is the consideration of letter supporting the bipartisan action regarding unfunded state mandates.
Yeah, we had the discussion, Mr. Chair, and I think that we're ready for a motion. So I will, I will make a motion that we sign on to the letter supporting bipartisan action regarding the unfunded state mandates.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, a sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next item is, on the action item, is moved down from the discussion items, and that is consideration of resolution seeking formal designation of State Highway 86 as a scenic and historic byway. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation that we approve the resolution seeking formal designation of State Highway 86 as a scenic and historic byway.
Second.
All in favor, a sign of aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda is executive session. Do we need to go into executive session today?
We do not, Mr. Chair, and just for the public's benefit, because I know there were phone calls about this issue this morning, this is a placeholder on your agenda, so that the public is aware that when appropriate, you will adjourn to an executive session at these regularly scheduled meetings. But there's no description here of the item, because there is no item. It's simply to notify the public that it could happen, and today there is no need that I am aware of to adjourn to executive session.
All right. We'll move on. Next item is planning, or board planning, items for the next agenda meeting. Gentlemen, do you have anything you want to add to that at this time?
Not at this time.
Sir?
Yeah, we generally have a recap of the fair and 4H presentation that comes up after the fair. I believe that sometime in October, but if we could have staff reach out to Extension Office and see when we can get that scheduled. It's usually the best meeting of the year, because all the kids come.
Workshops, study sessions, we have some already posted. I think we will leave that as is right now. Pending hearings, I know of none, unless you gentlemen know of any pending hearings? Okay. All right. With that, then we will adjourn this, or recess this meeting until 1:00 PM, when we will have the land use hearings. Thank you.